Your meeting of council, the date is Tuesday, March 18th, and the time is 7:07. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. There is nothing to report up from the closed portion of the meeting.
There was.
Mr. Churikoff? Sorry. We have quiet, thank you. Okay, nothing to report up from the closed portion, it was adjourned, and it will resume at the conclusion of the open portion, or it's as after all the items are covered. Do we have a motion to adopt the open portion of the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Any amendments, changes? No? Okay, all in favor? Close, motion carried, and we'll move to public participation. Anyone in the gallery like to participate?
Yeah, Russ Mickeljohn, 59 Brunswick.
All right, Russ.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. With respect to Agenda item 10.1.1, the Emergency Marine Access Study. Direct staff to undertake feasibility study to assess viability constructing emergency marine access infrastructure. I am not clear what problem is trying to be solved here. The village has water access at the marina. I think in the event of an emergency that caused a road closure, emergency vehicles will come from the direction where the the road is not blocked. If in the extreme emergency where there is no road access at all to Brunswick or to any anywhere else in Lions Bay. I think if you needed to get emergency equipment in, you would bring a landing barge up to Alberta Bay where there's a nice general beach, you would run that equipment up to the road, which is very close to the beach. There's actually a chain gate there already. This location, well, it's not central to Lions Bay. I think the village, you know, the north end of Lions Bay has already had a major catastrophic event with damage and loss of life and surely the village has has this to deal with and and other major problems to solve. And I don't understand this. It to me, it feels like a solution in search of a problem, and I would certainly urge you to focus on the other items that the village has to deal with at the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any others online?
Could I just remind that we have a there's a two-minute limit? I was wondering if we could do. That was fine.
That was.
I think that was well within the two minutes.
Yeah.
But I just think it's a normal, we should be reminded in case.
Yeah, okay, I'll remind. So those online that would like to comment, there's a two-minute limit, and I think Mr. Mickeljohn is well within that. He's brought up item number 10 in the agenda, and I think that'll be covered later in the agenda, so.
You go one hand up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ron McGlockens.
Thank you very much. In 1983, the horrific debris torrent resulted in the loss of life of the Wade family. With great community desire, we honored the family by naming a park for those lost. At the rejuvenation of the park in 2022, I was fortunate enough to honor those lost. The parallel event is the loss of David and Barbara Enns, which has broken the heart of the community. Taking positive action out of this negative opportunity, the Lions Bay Trail Blazers and the Lions Bay Historical Society deem the Oceanside exit of Magnesia and Bahatani Creek as a perfect spot to remember our lost citizens and friends. We believe through a volunteer effort spearheaded by the Pathfinders and the Historical Society, a memorial fitting the event a memorial fitting the event, the family members and our caring villagers' recognition of this somber event with an epitaph at the shore of Magnesia and Betahami Creek can be obtained. On April 15th, the next council meeting, Mr. Dudley, who's unfortunately unable to join me this evening, and I will lay out our plan and seek council approval for what we project. In its embryonic stage, we have fundraising plans in place and the support of the family, Jody and Michael, already in hand, and volunteers for spade work, which I am sure will be overwhelming. The request is that item on the agenda 10.1.1 is deleted. To recap, over April 15th, promised Mr. Dudley and I will flesh out our plan for a council decision to proceed and the terms we suggest. To make it simple for all council members, the motion is item 10.1.1 is deleted from the agenda. To make it even simpler, Mr. Broden, put that forward. Mr. Berry, second motion, then call it. Mr. Blackwell, your report is already in hand. I don't see any value to you adding anything more. Thank you, sirs, for your time.
Okay, any others online?
No.
No? Okay, with that, we'll move to the delegations to not.
I think we can we can deal with 10.1.1 when we when we come to it.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't see altering the the agenda based on on this.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the approval of the minutes from February 18th. Do we have motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Council Broden, second by Council Abbott. Any amendments?
I've got one. On page four, the closed meeting was canceled because we had no guest speaker. So we should have deleted the next section two, which basically says we're going to close for reasons 91L. That should be deleted.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, you're final that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other amendments?
No, that particular one. Oh, sorry, in a minute. Page six, that's not someone, yeah. On page six. Bottom of page six got me going on to page seven. It says, this is where the budget was says tabled, moved by Mayor Berry, and then it says that the budget be read and received as presented. So we can't have tabled it and read and received it, right?
Last line should be eliminated. Fine with that, Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other amendments? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll move to the approval of March 4th, 2025 minutes, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Council Abbott's second, Council Broden's. Any amendments?
Yeah. So this is the same question that I mentioned in the post. So in the reporting out, these minutes is where we should attach the financial statements, that we haven't done that yet. Okay.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, with that. Adjusted here. Business arising from the minutes.
So I'm sorry, the financial statements from the audit, then we'll be.
Attached to these minutes, and then we'll be on the list.
Okay, business arising from the minutes.
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay, thanks for having me.
Okay, yeah, on section, page, page eight of the package, section 9.1, this is the UBCM in attendance and allocation of funds. Two things, two business arising items. So one, we agreed who would go to the LMLGA. And we agreed it would be two attendees. We said we'd revisit who was going to the UBCM at a later date. But I notice in the budget, we carry $10,300 for for those meetings. What is that based on? We can discuss it later in the budget.
I think that's a budget discussion.
Well, it could be a budget discussion, but it came up in these minutes as what what we what we have agreed with, what we haven't agreed to. Now, my second question, other matter arising on this is for the UBCM resolutions, the one about the portable water treatment. What what do you need? There's been more discussion of the committee asked about that. There's been people reaching out and other people connecting with each other. What more, what do you need from us to to draft the actual resolution? Or can you do that from what we presented last time to the ministry? And then maybe we can look at it and add to it. Want to quickly?
Yeah, thank you through to Counselor Abbott. Yes, I can take that information, repackage it, and then forward it to whether it be you or if all of council wish to see it.
Yeah.
And then you can.
And then I'll explore that with the committee, and you will tighten it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be easiest if you took it first person, based on what I sent you last year.
And there is time at this point. There's, I can't remember the specific date. I think it's May, later latter part of May, I believe, but I'll check. There is time, considerable amount of time to do that work, so I will do so.
Okay. Right, it's, yeah, it's all ahead.
Anything, anyone else? No. Okay, with that, we'll move on. Unfinished business log, and that is 15, page 15, 9.1. Any items that the councils would like to call out of that?
Yeah, just Ross, an update sooner or later on the grant funding, 100% grant funding for small communities.
I'm gonna take care of that one tomorrow.
Okay. Hey, any other items?
I think we could strike. Sorry, I'm not very quick with my hands up today. I'm I'm a little under the weather. Could we strike 334 for council to provide CAO Blackwell with topics of interest for draft policies for the UBCM and LGMla, or strike the LGMla part of that?
Mr. Blackwell? Recommend that you consider, I think we can simply strike the LMLGA, that's kind of dusted. But certainly, council should be alive to potential topics above and beyond the one mentioned, but just now the Council Abbott for UBCM.
Okay. Yeah, we can also get a copy of the changes that you're referring to.
Yeah.
Council Broden.
Yeah, there's there's some, this motion is going to the UBCM regarding support for small communities in terms of 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 protocols of.
Emergency management?
Sorry?
Emergency management?
Yeah, emergency management. I think it's going there, but it's also going to go through the UBCM, as I recall. And then, yeah, go ahead.
And then there's the second part.
Yeah, Mr. Bosch, well, you can comment on that. It it also is to be addressed by staff to staff with Metro as well. So I don't know whether that will come into play with the UBCM or not, but maybe you can.
So to Council Broden's point, no, it won't necessarily make it to the UBCM. First of all, it has to be voted on at the LMLGA, which will require one of the two council attendees to promote it, to speak to it on the floor, and then it'll get voted on. If it's passed at the LMLGA, it'll make it onto the agenda for the UBCM. If it isn't, that it won't make it on the agenda, the the resolution agenda for the UBCM.
Wasn't, but wasn't there, weren't the municipalities who are putting forward similar kinds of of resolutions for the for the UBCM who've been reaching out for support on that? Been confusing the two issues.
I don't know, but if that's something that we should look into, definitely, we don't want to double up on.
Yeah.
On a resolution or or even bring it forward. We're not sure whether we're going to bring it forward or not, but maybe that's something you could look into.
Anyway, emergency management's a huge issue, obviously, and any any means we can bring it forward.
Yeah. So what I can tell you is that UBCM strikes a committee to work upon assessing the resolutions that come forward from municipalities as well as the regional chapters, and if there is any redundancy in in the resolutions for the year or resolutions that are similar from past years. I don't know how far back they go. They'll strike, they'll strike them, so that.
Same thing, it's coming up or happening.
So it's, I would almost say, even if you have, unless you, unless council is absolutely aware it's redundant, I would throw it in anyway, on the off chance it finds its way through, because if it is redundant, then we'll strip it out anyway.
Okay. Yeah, I think the other other ideas that were coming forward for the UBCM were also around the the functionality and effectiveness of council and support for councils who are having any kind of dysfunction. I think there was some work happening with that.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell?
There's a considerable amount of work behind the scenes occurring with regard to various initiatives, ideas to sort of address challenges that some communities are having. Some of those, I think council is aware of, municipal ombudsperson, for example, or ethics commissioner is another. So there are a number of moving pieces. I know that one of the regional districts on Vancouver Island has an individual that's championing one such effort, so council can expect to see a number of stuff.
So just as an update, the the board at Metro passed a resolution that Metro staff and the small community staff under 19,000 residents would come up with a plan, proposal business case on the region managing the emergency response for small communities. So that's in play right now. And our staff, as well as the other communities that are under 19,000, will be working with Metro staff. Okay, any other items?
No.
Hey?
What did we completed, do we want to start?
They're completed, they'll be gone next time?
I usually mean some of them.
Then they expire.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move to item number 10, reports, and 10.1, staff CAO, 10.1.1, Emergency Marine Access. I'll pass it over to Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So the report and its rationale is in front of you. This issue was a discussion point during the EOC activation with regard to some of the specialists that we had the benefit of relying on at the EOC that were brought in through Metro Vancouver, and the broader discussion included how the community needs to prepare for a catastrophic event that severs road access north and south. We can think largely assume that that's unlikely, but it is possible. And there was acknowledgement of the various marine access, the marine access opportunities, i.e. the the marina that exists, but there was also recognition that having a built-in redundancy is of value. So this is Mr. Burr and I visited this location, and we were looking at some other issues, and thought that this fit exactly within what the EOC people were 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 talking about. And so then this notion is to just to assess whether or not this is a viable location, and it could be that it's not a viable location for whatever reasons, but I think that in due course, there's value in assessing it and either ruling it in or ruling it out as another marine access option. It would be, I think, ill-advised to rely on one or hope that everything would just work out. I think it is wise to be prepared because, as I think council observed through this recent event, it is hard to facilitate large initiatives during an event, an actual event, so it's better to be prepared. This is just to assess whether or not it's a viable option.
Okay, Mr. Burr, anything you'd like that?
Okay.
Okay, we'll go around the table, Council Broden.
Yeah, I I think we have so many very, very important issues to address. I recognize this as a, as a something worthy of of looking at at some point, but I'm very, I think we have so many other things that are that are priority, including the completing the the reconstruction or the recovery of, or the, well, I guess reconstruction of the Bahatani Creek area that this this is so far down the list, I would I would not be interested in in allocating any staff time to it whatsoever. I also think what we heard earlier this evening is that there's definitely the village residents have other plans for the area. It is a, you know, a park-like area destination and used by quite a number of those residents for 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 access to the ocean, and I'm not sure what's envisioned here, but but I think in in the event of an emergency, a significant emergency, we're going to be looking at bringing things into, you know, any some some kind of flat beach somewhere. I think there's other alternatives. And I I just wouldn't support any any staff time on this one.
Okay, now to Council Abbott.
Yeah, acknowledging what the two residents said in public participation, and I don't disagree with them, I actually agree with that. I also think we should move this down the road. I think the place to start this discussion is with the EPC. That is the committee that we we have established to to do in these things. So I think that's, for me, that would be the best place to start, when we had the EPC up and going again, or in form, that looks like, good, this is one of the items on the table, that's the best group that should have been best suited to in terms of the merits of this location, allocations, whatever, or what the need is.
Okay, Counselor Conla, anything to add?
Yeah, I would agree that this could be tabled for the future. I think the meeting with EPC and then maybe bring it back to a committee of the whole for some more fulsome discussion before it's brought to council for a decision. But I I'm in favor of postponing anything on this matter tonight.
Okay, I would agree that I I think currently we've got excellent access down at the marina, and I can't see with all the items on our plate, with the jetty, the beach park, and the various projects underway, this be a priority at this time. If Metro wanted to put some funds towards that, that that would be different, but I don't think at this time I would, I'd be in favor of tabling this, so. All in favor of tabling this? Or do we have a motion? Do we need a motion to table?
Can we just let it die?
Okay.
I'm kidding, I don't want to do anything.
Okay, we'll move on to 10.1.2, and that's the budget, the second reading. Mr. Churikoff, if you'll join us and answer any questions? Thank you. So, starting on page 23 of your package, just a change from previous version, I've added the loan proceeds of temporary borrowing to fund the Cub3 project and included the interest cost that would be able to, expected interest cost, that we could afford to pay it on the loan. Confirmed with the MFA that we can borrow the money after filing a little bit of paperwork under our temporary borrowing by law. It would need to be repaid within five years, or else it transitioned, transitions into a long-term loan, and then we'd have to go back to a reference number. So what the budget presents is basically a five-year amortization of the one with three million, so payment of principal and interest, you know, based on a five-year loan amortization schedule by the MFA. I had a request to discuss what the current year funding for capital expenditures are, like specifically coming out of our reserves, not what has been previously put into reserves. So I I'd like to draw your attention again to page 38 of EE. And in the very last column, it details the specific items that are unfunded currently, and then require draws from reserve, 806,000. So if there are items that you'd like to, these are uncommitted, and require funding, if there's anything that you would like to reassess and change, that's the area for discussion. Primarily that relates to the my B B project, our portion of the funding is 201,000. Sita project, 95,000, cage water adjustment, 200,000. The Bayview design construction, the CMP into the road of the school, 125,000. The designer place, 50,000. Motion view to hide you, the Lord project, 45,000. Then discussion about the bylaw vehicle. There was some discussion about before, and then our port of embalde for 45,000. And then the fire command vehicle for 40,000, and electric charge life. So those are the items making up the 806,000 that would require draws on reserve. Aside from that, there haven't been any changes. Okay, any questions? For Mr. Churikoff?
Um, yeah, I think that assessment that Judge just gave you is based on the email that I sent. So we've got that clear, that we all understand, so what we're actually asking for this year is a further 806,000 to be removed from our reserves. Plus, there was 700,000 worth of CapEx for that, maybe it was a combination of things from last year that didn't actually get executed.
Yeah, they're, they were, the tax weren't sitting in our, that's why they have 6 million dollars in cash. Okay.
So so we've got about, take the 1.5 million off the six, we've got 4.5 million dollars in reserves.
Service special. But we'll be on page 42 of EE. And our end reserves, based on the current budget, the 4.8 million. It's that significant portion, which is, you know, infrastructure, capital, land, can't retouch, gas tax, can't equity, private store, and adoption, which we're expecting to spend. And then the unrestricted reserves or the general reserves are working down, or making up a kind of remainder there, but in total, 4.874 million.
Okay. So if we continue as we've been doing the last couple of years in spending, and it's a rate of eight to 900,000, taking from reserves eight to nine, 900,000 dollars a year, which kind of seems to be going on a on a five-year plan to liquidation, right?
Yes, I mean, you can't draw on reserves forever. Your alternatives are to pursue grant funding, which in one respect, Mr. Burr has been quite successful in getting coastal water meeting grants. There are also opportunities between with the CWF to pursue funding for the pirate truck. The, but essentially, yes. So the question then becomes, well, if we don't have any certainty over grants, but we have an understanding that, you know, within our infrastructure plan, we need to address a variety of projects, and those can be, from our last plan identified on page 39 of EE, probably the next four years, which have not been budgeted for. All of the next four years, which have not been budgeted for, they're just parked as nothing, almost thirteen. Thirteen point three million dollars worth of project costs have been identified as um, infrastructure uh, costs. We can't fund it though, either going through loan or getting a grant, um, it's not a pump of tax, taxation. Uh, so that is a strategic plan that I think council would be well advised to. Um, discuss, uh, so that we have a priority planning, that's um, more needed and in budget towards.
In fact, the in here, to be clear, is um, taking out a loan to complete the cup project. That was, that was agreed in the last meeting, right? So. I, I just think I'm, I, I personally think it's still too big a draw on reserves. Um, and I think we should be looking at some of the items and discussing some of the items on, on the list. Um, whether they, they should be, should be further deferred.
Um, if I, if I may, so I would say that the two hundred and one could line the baby shark, that's our contribution, which is about good to grants. You can't really touch that unless you don't want to do the grant at all, or the, once they eat park at all. So everything below that line of two hundred and one thousand four seventy-one is up for discussion, that is, it's on council's direction. But that's basically what's been put in based on advice from the works, fire and admin. And uh, that's really the working room that we have. Hey, Councilor Abbott, any items on that list that you?
Well, to be clear, I, I send emails to council and, and my mess, I, I do not believe you're going to get the beach work done. With, with that grant, within that grant, I don't believe that, so I think we need to keep in mind that it's probably going to be more money required to complete the beach park. The way we're heading, um, the, the jetty is in here minus twenty-seven thousand, it's not twenty-seven thousand, it's minus, minus. Otherwise, it doesn't add up to eight hundred and six. Um, so I'm not sure. What's going on about, about the jetty, but um, there hasn't been, you know, promoted by anyone in the budget. Um. The two hundred thousand dollars for the pH adjustment retriever. Element, we're going to do this yet as we keep punting it down the road. Um, you know, may still be a candidate, there's been other suggestions, the, the main proponent of, of that work. Who's on the call, um, also managed to throw in a curveball, lest, you know, lest I see meetings anywhere, maybe there's another way to do it. So maybe, maybe that's a candidate. Um, and then I, you know, I think the trucks. I think we asked the fire chief last time, um, one of those three items he thought was the most, the most important, and I think he said. The one that he really wanted was the fork truck, second-hand fork truck for flipping these cars. Um, in the, in the training facility, so. Yeah, maybe those are the ones that need to, need to be reconsidered, in my opinion.
Uh, just so for clarity, um, you're suggesting we remove the forty thousand for command vehicle, vehicle, the thirty-two thousand for electric dogs of life cutters. And the two hundred thousand for pH water adjustment.
I'd like to hear from others, but yeah, that would be my, what I, what I would say is up for grabs. If we are comfortable with eight hundred and six thousand from reserves, but I, you know, I'd like to hear what other people think about that number. I just think it's a best track to. To depleting our reserves, things too much.
Okay, Councilor Brown?
Yeah, I think in light of discussions about alternates to um. To the pH water adjustment, um, the, the, there are two considerations there for me. And one is that there's a capex, there's capital expenditure uh, to put it in, but then there's an operating expenditure to operate it over time. And so uh, if there's any other way to, to do that, a, a more economical way to do that, and, and we are, you know, looking at options there. Terms of potential well, well water, um, which also gives us the potential for more water supply in the summer and year round. And also during periods of extreme turbidity, um, we can, we can call on the well water. So, I, you know, I think some real advantages there, so I, I'd support us of delaying that pH water adjustment. Uh, two hundred thousand, because I do believe there's other options and, and that we really need to pursue those. It'd be a terrible thing to have that installed and then not have it required. Um, and then plus the operation costs, which is, if there's alternatives that are cheaper to operate. I think, I think as a village, we really need to be looking at ongoing operation costs every time we make, make decisions as well. Which was one of the reasons I was such a strong proponent for uh, geothermal for the, for the hall, and I know that there, there was time considerations with that. And, you know, I accept that, but, but just as a general policy, I think we need to be looking as much as possible. At, at year-over-year expenditures, because we get really quite fixated on the capital expenditures. I think we missed, missed the boat on some of the other things. Um, uh, in light of the fact that, that we are going to somehow reorganize. The fire, fire chief or, um, I, I think that uh, I would support. I, I think there's a real concern about safety around the forklift and the fact that so much training goes on with, with uh. Auto, auto extrication that requires forklift to, to properly position the cars and stuff. And I'd support that, but I, I do think we can delay the other two fire expenditures at this time.
Okay, um, I would tend to agree on the uh, the PH water adjustment. With the opportunity for uh, wells that may replace that, I think that's uh, something that we could look at. Perhaps eliminating, uh, you brought up uh, about fire chief, and I'm not sure, Mr. Turcoff, if we added in. A potential cost, I don't know if there's been any sort of.
A new adjustment there yet?
No, there's nothing in adjustment.
It wouldn't be capital, it would, um, yeah, the opex supplemental.
Okay, when we get to that portion, we may want to look at that. Uh, jetty, I think this is something. I just think it's critical, it's the foundation of our beach park. I don't think that uh, that's something that should be delayed. Any longer than uh, we need to. Uh, any more damage to that beachfront and uh, it's going to be a lot more costly than what we have down here. Uh, Councilor Conla, anything?
Uh, no, I think you guys have touched upon everything, uh, taking into consideration though. The fire chiefs asks when it came to the order of priority, I think we could go with the forklift and eliminate the other two for now. And there will be a new fire chief who may reassess their priorities, so we should wait to hear from them.
Okay, Councilor Brown, you underhand that?
Yes, um, we, we, we keep discussing the jetty repeatedly and, and, and I think we need to go back to the. To the reason why the jetty is so pivotally important uh, with, with uh, sea rise and the increased storms and so on. Uh, the jetty as it currently exists is getting more and more, more. Ground down, and if we have a, a really significant uh, storm. Um, with high tides and, and everything else, uh, the, the potential to, for catastrophic damage to our beach park. Is there, so all the funds that we can put into the beach park uh, wouldn't be destroyed up above, but certainly down below. We could have a tremendous amount of damage, so that the jetty is, is really an important investment and, and needs to move ahead as quick, quickly as possible.
Okay, Councilor Abbott?
Um, we want to talk about the jetty, but I'm looking at this budget, and I don't know what anyone's suggesting doing for the jetty in this budget. Cause all I can see is minus twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, if I may, after the chair, yeah, so, discussing with Mr. Burr. Um, so there, there were uh, previous budget allocations for a hundred and eight, six thousand dollars, uh, by reducing the scope of the project. Uh, the actual cost remaining is less than it was previously sitting in reserve, so we're not taxing more. Effectively, what the negative twenty-seven thousand dollars represents is a um, ability to allocate that amount to a different capital project. Not spending so much.
So tax, well, saving the nail.
That just brings me to, to a topic that's um, very relevant here, I think, or maybe it's slightly as an aside, because it's not basically a budget item. But um, he's been, you know, let's walk in climate action committee and other groups. About nature-based solutions and Gibson's is one of the leaders, leaders in, in this, these ideas. And around all kinds of infrastructure things, about, you know, our concept of just stop fighting nature, work with nature. And it come up with solutions, um, seawater rise, uh, beachfront protections. Um, you know, more natural arming versus hard arming that we've traditionally done, all of these things are, are very relevant to this discussion. And I think, I think we need to take back and think about that other communities are, and we're not, we're still stuck in, there's only one way to build a wall in front of it. So I think we need to do that, um, and on that point, at the next climate action committee, we're going to have uh, subject matter expert presenting to us. Who's done a lot of the stuff from Sunshine Coast, um, so then I, then might, well, that meeting will go out. So if you're interested in that kind of things, I would suggest you, to be expressed, you might be, uh, very education. So that's, that was a bit of a aside, I accept that, but I think it's relevant to stepping back on the dating, deciding what we really want to do.
Okay, I'll just add, uh, in, in regards to the jetty, we had Scott Christie, who's, who's worked throughout Howl Sound and. Throughout the coastal waters, uh, I think he was the one that initially looked at that, so. Um, we certainly had our share of experts weigh in on this.
Was he involved in worship days, however?
I'm not sure if he was involved in worship there or not, uh, I know he's been involved in the kids' beach and, and uh, as I say, throughout Howl Sound. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Turcoff?
Well, I have one question was. There's a little bit of groundhog days, we have these discussions, but then we seem to get the budget back the same way, and then we say, well, it hasn't changed yet, so we're not going to do a second reading. Um, there's one item on there that I, you know, two campuses were adamant, we wanted to see taken off, and that was the. Um, the hundred and forty thousand dollars for the trees, that's still in the budget, and I think, can we safely say that that's going to be taken out of this budget now?
Okay, Mr. Blackwell?
So if I could, this is a closed matter, but that money has to stay there, or it comes from some other place.
Through the show.
Uh, Councilor Conla?
Uh, through, through you to the C O, I agree, this is a closed discussion, but we, it definitely warrants further discussion.
Councilor Abbott, you satisfied with that?
No, I'm not comfortable with everyone's budget with that extra hundred thousand dollars in it.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell?
Uh, without drilling down too deeply on it, um, it's primarily at this point a placeholder, but council has no choice legally. Has no choice. It is one of the things you have no wiggle room on. So. There's nothing to discuss from my perspective, you have to accommodate it, that means you have to take something else out of the budget. So be it, hopefully it's not necessary, but there's. Did at least plan for it.
Okay, um, based on the discussion, did, uh, is council comfortable with removing the pH water adjustment, two hundred thousand?
Yes.
That could be something that possibly comes out of this discussion, yeah?
Well, kicked it down the road five years in a row, so.
So, just thinking on the fly here with respect to Council Abbott's concerns. Uh, one way to deal with this is, should council choose to grant second reading with that amount in there? Staff will tell you that nothing, no spend will happen. And without the involvement of council, I didn't, I don't necessarily mean the approval of, but. If that gives you any more comfort. In other words, it's not just sitting there just to be.
Well, it's my, in my experience in staffing generally, I'm not necessarily anyone in this room with a better budget they spend.
Yeah, no, that would not be the case, this is extraordinary, and it would not be done that way.
Sorry, you're referring to the two hundred thousand pH?
No, the hundred and forty.
Um, if, if, if I may, uh, to the church, uh, um, further to Mr. Blackwell's comments. Um, the budgeted amount would be put into a uh, internally restricted reserve. And we have a resolution that no amount would be drawn from the reserve without council approval. That would work.
No, can't do that, man.
Okay, any other, Councilor Brown?
Council, councils have certain range of authority and, and, and the authority is not, council cannot. Move to not follow uh, the law. So, and, and, you know, regulations and, and, you know, provincial mandates. Um, so, you know, I think it's, it's, i- if something is required by law. You know, council may, can, may move that they don't like it, however, they don't have the option of, of overriding it. And I think this council has become confused on that at different times, so.
Okay, any other questions for uh, Mr. Blackwell and Mr. Turcoff?
One further comment, uh, based upon Councilor Broughton's comments is. We are in the midst of an educational series on risk assessments and tolerance for the village of Lions Bay. So I don't see any law that we would be in contravention of, and it does warrant further discussion of which we cannot go into here. There are extenuating circumstances involving this one particular line item. So, we do need further discussion and there does need to be some restrictions when it comes to spending. This particular light on, while I agree that it does need to be there to mitigate potential risks to the village. There does need to be council oversight.
Blackwell, any further comments before we call the second reading?
Any further comments, I need to make it closed, unfortunately.
Okay, uh, any questions for Mr. Turcoff?
Um, one more question in, in general, uh, I can't remember where the number sits now, but. Um, last year we reduced our legal, uh, legal budgets and then we blew by our orders of magnitude. I don't think we're going to do any different this year, are we comfortable with the budget we're carrying for legal? Or are we going to somehow do something else, okay?
Mr. Blackwell, what's your thoughts?
I don't think you want to know my thoughts on this.
Um, I would suggest that it might be a good idea to revisit the, the line adding for legal costs, and however, I think it's a discussion that's closed.
And if I could. Certainly, this is something not only that could be discussed and should be discussed and closed for now. Uh, it would be valuable to have a real-time information as of now. To give you a sense as to uh, where we sit relative to what might be coming down the pike.
Okay, so you asked me.
Oh, sorry, I left off the last piece, sorry. Sorry about that, so the rest of the sentence is, but that could be considered a third reading by council. If council still minded.
Okay, it left us hanging. Any other questions for Mr. Turcoff?
Um, I'm just looking at. Uh, page thirty-four. Um, the, we have um, ESS director honorary, and we have ESS support. I guess at this point, we, you know, we budgeted twenty-five thousand for that. I, I, I guess don't think there's any change needed at this point, but I'm just, just thinking, we'll, we'll, we'll be hearing more about fire chief and. And emergency services and all sorts of things, so I think there's, there may be a bigger. Looking at the, you know, the whole package, we have the EPC director fees, we have all sorts of things together, I mean. We need, really need to understand the whole, how we're, how we're going to be doing emergency services going forward. Um, and, and overall staffing going forward.
If I may, uh, we can't control other than what our expectations are as to what, what staff is to be, to be available or when.
Right.
Um, what this is, um, is an estimate.
A placeholder, right?
Placehold, okay, and I, I, I would like to reiterate that if there are any significant variances to an approved budget. Council can come back and then approve an amendment to the budget.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, uh, do we have motion uh, to read, have the, uh, approve the budget second reading?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second or on that? All right, I'll second it. Uh, any further discussion before we call the question? Oh, okay, all in favor?
I.
I opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, uh, motion defeated. Okay, we'll move to item uh, ten point two committees, nothing.
Sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
So if we just leave it there, staff can just, in theory, walk away, then we have no money for next year call. So assuming that you want to pay your staff and pay for things, you have to have a budget. So right now, staff has no idea what council wants. You've shut down second reading. Staff, I'm sure I speak for Joe here, correct me if I'm wrong, now we have no idea what to do. So when are we bringing it, when do we bring it forward for consideration, what needs to change, we have no idea.
Now we have no idea what to do. So when do we bring it forward for consideration? What needs to change? We have no idea. So you've really snickered us with regard to helping you guys pass a uh budget, so please provide to Joe, Mr. Chirkoff, with some concrete direction so that council can feel comfortable in granting the second reading, so we can move this on. Just as a reminder, if I could, you were hoping to get this adopted in December. We are now halfway through March.
So we've given Mr. Chirkoff several things we wanted to see changed, so he's got those to do. And then it seems like we have to have this one more closed meeting discussion because I came out of the last time we had that discussion with a completely different opinion of what you've just said to us now. So that's what I think we need to do. So let's go have this other closed meeting discussion.
All right, um we voted on that, so we'll move to the next item, uh and that is resolutions, a draft Lower Mainland Government Association Letter of Support. Uh that's on page forty three.
Good.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh this is, this drop before you is a letter to solicit support in relation to the uh draft resolution you've put forward to the O M L G A. This is sort of a a friendly petitioning of uh member municipalities uh who got to supporting uh this council's resolution.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Blackwell?
Um yeah, questions or suggestions, I'm not sure what they are really, um and might wanna we might wanna change what I was, what I originally put down here based on what I heard earlier. So my first thought was should we not be defining this as small member communities and and what is small now? We've always had this magic number of five thousand, this is a really small community. Now I heard Metro talking about nineteen thousand as a number where they would consider small communities for emergency management. Um so the way it reads at the moment is just like any member can elect in, but we really don't want big municipalities electing into this. So the idea was for small municipalities that couldn't do their own. The way it's written is anyone can sign up. Is that was that is that intentional or removed our thoughts?
Mr. Blackwell.
Uh thank you for you councillor Abbott. Um I think it does speak to small communities further on. But I I I wouldn't uh uh sort of get hung up on the details too much. The reason is the province is gonna be the one, even if it does entertain this idea. There will be the one that will have to do the research and all the work that goes into figuring out how this would work. Um just as a reminder to council, regional districts are required through legislation, but we do a couple of things. The rest of the things they do, um they they do by choice. A couple of things they must do by by legislative uh obligation. One of those things is emergency management. Um so the beauty of this is that it's not a dramatic shift in legislative change. So the notion that um emergency management be zoomed out to be is a bigger discussion. Um I'm sure that the Richmans and the Bernabes of the world, et cetera, will push back and say we're fine, but they may not. There may be an argument to be made uh with respect to centralizing that. You know, in this case, it would be Metro, I couldn't, but um but maybe it it it's it would be self-limiting, I guess, is what I'm saying. So I don't know, there's argument for for sure, small communities, that's without a doubt, but I wouldn't want to complicate anything by leaving out the larger ones just in case there, somebody wanted to make an argument.
Maybe I can add the the nineteen thousand figure came up was on the fly with Metro and it it was capped at nineteen because that included uh area A and the Tawas and First Nations, I believe, where uh the four small communities that we normally speak of with Metro. Um it goes the only plus, so that number is a little bit, you know, it's a moving target. It was customized for the metro situation.
There is one other point too, uh that that is sort of the the essence of this uh speaks to the 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 mechanics being opt in. So even small communities, as this stands now, could choose to opt in or not opt in.
Yeah, I understand that. So you're right, the word small appears in the second paragraph. But it doesn't appear in the first paragraph in front of member communities and it doesn't appear in the third paragraph. I I I just thought I'm thinking to me, if we we pitch this for something that small communities need, I think it's more likely to be, you know, have success. It's more likely to resonate with people. If we try and make it broader, as you suggested, you are gonna get the birdies and wow, we don't need it. And then it's gonna lose something. I mean, if it grew to be bigger communities later, so be it, but I think we should I think we've got a better chance successfully pitch it at the small communities, put that word small in front of the word communities everywhere, done easier to find the number. The the other, my other suggestion, I'll I'll finish my other suggestion and then when I speak, I also think um, you know, we cannot we're not gonna completely um obligate any responsibility of the community, because there always is gonna be an initial, oh shit, some things happened, what do we do now? Right? And so we know that's gonna be in there. Um what we're trying to say is we can, once it becomes a serious disaster, we we don't have the horsepower to handle. Um so I I was thinking maybe that a sentence to that effect should be in there, something beyond, you know, once emergency or disaster is established, the small community does not have the wherewithal to do the next steps. Not rather than it sounds like, hey, we don't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take in care of any of our own, you know, our own issues. So I just thought maybe some sort of sentence, I'm wording it very well, I didn't try to word it, but some sort of sentence, we understand that we have a responsibility, an initial responsibility, but what becomes next, we don't capable of doing. I think that might sell it, make it sound a bit better.
Um so with regard to councillor Abbott's first comments, yeah, I think that's perfectly fine. Uh adding this small reference through through each paragraph, uh with regard to the second comment pertaining to um this sort of the whereas piece, I don't know what to tell you on that. You could be right that there is some degree of obligation, that may simply be in the perfect world, a fire chief contacting, in our case, Metro Vancouver to say it's an emergency. That might be all it is and to be honest, that would be ideal for the small communities if it was just a phone call, hit the red button sort of thing. Those sorts of details need to be worked out. So I wouldn't want to necessarily foreclose that on that as a possibility. Um I my recommendation would be to leave that, leave that one set.
So my thought there, you can stew over and see what you think, my thought there was the current law was written, we are responsible.
Yes.
Since we wrote a bylaw for that E P C and said you have to be there, good, we are responsible, so we we had to do that. Um and so rather than say, hey, we we're not taking that away, we're saying, yes, we understand we're responsible, that's as little as what we can do. Just seems like, you know, it's less of a pushback on the country legislation. It was just my thought.
Yeah. Fair enough, um as I say, you know, um I would hope to play the devil's advocate with the province. I would say no, small communities want nothing to do with that legislative requirement. You can't deal with it, nothing. You take it on at the regional level. That would be my opening sort of salvo strategically. Uh it may be that the province says, well, guess what, as you as you point out, no, here's the line in the sand, but I would wanna start, you know, as sort of optimistically is a good part to be asked.
Okay, can you uh make some changes? And incorporate some of the comments?
So just for clarification, uh with those changes, is council comfortable with that letter going out on your signature?
Okay, yes.
Counsel.
Yes. All right, all in favor? We need a motion. Uh yeah, motion was to uh accept the draft Lower Mainland Government Association Letter of Support with the changes discussed. We motion that.
So moved.
Okay, moved by councillor Broughton, second by councillor Abbott, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh next item is correspondence and councillor Broughton.
Okay, I'd just like to, we're on page um pardon me, forty five of the agenda is delivered. It's like the highlight um letter to that I I returned to the Squamish Nation uh regarding the climate legacy strategy. And I copied councillor Abbott in that and he and as a result, uh he was contacted by the Squamish Nation, so there's a back and forth and it's the man has been referred to as Climate Action Committee and um um in their hands and that's very, very positive.
Yeah, so all these two things, they won, um they're not able to come to our next meeting, they can't meet their schedule and I'm not sure when they can. There was also whatever, throw the ball over the fence to the C A O, cause they also wanted to know where's the staff. I explained to them, we don't have staff, we don't have a climate action committee, uh can department or so you're gonna have to chime in some. So you know.
Right. Okay, anyway, it's uh let's start there. Uh the other items, I think, are from general correspondence are are um are as as written and as received. Just like to highlight, um in the resident correspondence, Mayor has responded to Ms. Dudley's letter of the twenty sixth of February and um the fourteenth of March, Mr. McLaughlin has requested uh permission to use either the Lions Bay Village coat of arms or the flag imagery on the um seeking of of um of naming of of the village bird. Um now council at the last meeting supported the concept of of a competition to to find a a the village bird. Um and so um uh he's asking it as part of the literature that goes out to promote that, that the village flag or coat of arms be included on that. And I certainly would support because it is going, uh council has supported the concept of the competition, so I'm just
Would you like to propose a resolution?
So I'd move that the um historical society um be given permission to use the either the village coat of arms or flag on their promotional materials regarding the naming of, I can't remember what's it called, name the bird competition. Lions Bay Bird Family um naming.
Slightly, okay, do we have a second? All right, all in favor?
I.
Motion carried.
Perfect. Okay, the rest of it, corresponding is is as as received.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to public questions and then we're going to go back into our closed portion of the meeting. Uh public questions in the gallery.
I think one thing I have to say is that I don't understand why, if you're saying that the jetty is so a high priority for protecting the beach, why was it ever taken out of the grant in the first place? That doesn't make sense to me.
I think because the uh it was unknown uh was the feedback from uh and and I think that was the feedback at the time to the beach committee, but I'll pass it over to councillor Broughton as he was there with the beach committee or councillor Kynl. Uh councillor Broughton, did you want to comment?
Uh well, we were in a conversation actually with the provincial funding authority. And they were suggesting that we we look at what's, you know, that they want wanna get things done. They're they're they really are are very supportive. And they were questioning the the feasibility of 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 that within with the budget that was was ascribed to it. And they're saying it's 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 a very important thing. It is an unknown, you might wanna set it aside. And until you understand better what's going on, so it it's very very much needed by the community and uh or the to protect the beach. And but but the original it was like a refurbishment of the jetty that was there, it was kind of a capping of it, as I understand it. And ultimately what we found is it requires complete reconstruction, which is a totally different kind of infrastructure uh matter, which was not, uh the 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 idea, I think, was more to give people access to the beach and make easier uh beach craft access. So that was how how it was envisioned in the original grant application. And versus becoming a a major, major construction and and so on, so.
So what's the cost gonna be for the more work on the jetty than now? Is that?
Well, the budgeted all amount is at the latest one hundred and eighty thousand, something to that effect.
And what was it when it was in the grant?
Um I don't recall the exact number, I think it's in the eighty.
Okay, um maybe we can get back to you on that, on the cost. Yeah, okay, um any uh online guests who wish to speak?
No.
So, okay, uh motion to uh return the open portion of the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, uh moved by councillor Abbott, seconded by councillor Broughton, all in favor?
I, yes.
Carry. Okay, thank you very much to the public for attending. And we'll take a uh two-minute break or five-minute break.